Seventy-two order. And the...
We lost our staff.
Maybe.
So we will know to that, uh, Berg is Addison Olson.
Here.
Uh, Felton.
Here.
Patrick.
Here.
Ramsey.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Teal.
Teal.
Okay, now I need a motion for the council to go into closed session.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm on four, so we are into closed session. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the comment from the citizen president and it's linked to three minutes per speaker.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Steve?
I will make this quick, but I would like to wave everyone to National Night Out, which is tomorrow at Lakeview Park from five-thirty to seven-thirty. It's one of our biggest community events. We have about fifteen hundred people that come, so please join us. Also, a week from Saturday is Battle of the Badges, the police officers versus the firefighters. Today, we had the coin flip and the police officers won that one.
Do we have a coin again?
Thank you. Yeah, two had a coin. It's a lot by the police department, of course. But that does go out to benefit people with childhood diseases this year. Benny is our recipient. He was at the coin flip today and he suffers from, um, chromosome, sorry, I wrote it down.
Chromosome nineteen?
Chromosome deletion fourteen disease, so, um, hopefully we can raise a lot of money for him and hopefully the police department will be at the fire department.
All right. Where do we go?
Three years in a row, police department has won.
Okay, anyone else?
I have come.
Yes, Kathy?
I have, um, the ordinance six point oh five storage and accumulation of junk and I'd like to, um, refer that to LNO for rewording, for to look at.
Okay, so somebody need to make a mo-- so you're making that motion?
I'm just making a referral.
No, I'm making a referral.
A referral, so can you need a second?
You don't need to do that, do you?
I don't think you need a second.
Oh, you don't?
I...
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, all right, so do we need to make a motion? Got a vote on that one? Okay, all those in favor of this referral, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, all right, so that's referred to the LNO. Anyone else wants to speak? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the presentation from, uh, this is the annual update from Middleton Area Development Corporation and the MADC president, Kevin Behaney, is going to speak. So, Mike, do you want to go background of MADC or Kevin? You will, or?
We will, uh, we'll do it together.
Okay, all right.
By me, is this one, is this on? Okay, very, thank you. I want to thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to provide the update to the council. It's been a couple of years since, uh, I think we provided the last update, so some of this may be news for you, um, new information, I should say. But, uh, there's a handout that I've provided to you. Uh, I just want to cover that with you, uh, take about five minutes of your time here, tell you a little bit about the origination of MADC and, uh, the role we play in the community, our current board and some of our initiatives going forward. MADC, uh, was originated back in nineteen sixty-nine. It operated, uh, for about fifteen years and then in the mid-eighties, it went defunct. It stayed that way until about two thousand, when Mayor Dan Ramsey and Vic Connor, um, kind of re-energized it. And then in, um, uh, two thousand and three, uh, it was endowed with, uh, two million dollars from the sale of the Rotisip property under Mayor Doug Zwong. Those funds then, uh, were put to use in loan programs and also to build the terminal out at the airport, uh, which is property of MADC. And then, uh, an important date occurred in about seven years ago when MADC kind of became its own standalone entity so that it could operate, um, uh, independently without having to, um, bring all loans before the common council. And the key, uh, component to that is, uh, the financial information that borrowers would provide could be done so on a confidential basis and kept that way. And so, when I became in, uh, came on board in two thousand and eleven, um, MADC was essentially set up as a standalone entity. It has its own, uh, board of directors and its own professional team around it. So since, uh, since that time, uh, what we've focused on is promoting economic development within the city of Middleton. And we've had a very good track record of deploying our cap to that regard, providing loans to businesses to help them expand and create jobs and, uh, also attract new businesses to Middleton. Our loan guidelines will allow us to do financing for, um, building expansion, real estate, um, tenant improvements, um, uh, new equipment. We really have a lot of flexibility. The approval process really is driven by the board of directors. Loan presentations are reviewed, the board takes a vote. Now, how do we end up with loan opportunities? There's a couple of ways. Typically, uh, Mike Davis would receive a call, uh, at, uh, at the city with a business possibly interested in relocating in Middleton. Mike has been aware of MADC's capacity. That has, um, allowed us to provide an introduction to MADC. Sometimes, uh, we're able to fill a void there, sometimes we haven't been able to, depending on the, the type of funds that are needed. And we'll tell you, as a banking climate, and I'm a, uh, commercial lender myself, as a banking climate has improved over the last five, six years, it's been much easier for businesses to get financing where MADC traditionally might have played in that role. So that has been one of the changes. I think another way that, um, I've seen in the last few years with opportunities for MADC is, uh, serving as president, getting out in the community. Mike and I have done a couple of joint presentations. The business community has become more aware of MADC. I've been approached directly. Most recently, uh, an opportunity presented itself potentially for MADC where a, uh, investor is looking to acquire real estate, uh, bringing fifty jobs to, uh, Middleton, potentially, and, um, is looking to help do some tenant improvements to that building. That would be a niche, for example, that we, we could step in and, and fill that void where banks wouldn't necessarily provide that type of traditional financing. So, um, we look at every opportunity that we can. I think the partnership between the city and MADC has really helped, um, create those opportunities and I see that roadmap continuing into the future. Some of the services that we provide, as I mentioned, um, a broad range of lending programs. As I said, we, uh, have the property, the airport property with the terminal. Um, we have a five-year lease in place with the fixed-based operator. In turn, uh, ties into what the city does with the operator agreement at the airport, so another example of the partnership we have. Annually, we provide a payment to the city of Middleton of fifteen thousand dollars for the services that are provided to us, uh, working with, um, Mike and Abby. And, uh, a couple other expenditures we make, uh, we have a full-page ad that we paid for promoting the city of Middleton and the opportunities here in the Madrep, uh, publication. And we, most recently, signed on with Exelegent, uh, and that website provides, uh, leads on commercial real estate and leasing opportunities for someone looking, or a business owner or company looking to relocate into Middleton. So, um, we, I think we've, we've done a very good job in recent years to really help promote the city of Middleton as a good place to do business. With regard to that, uh, let me tell you a little bit about some of the companies that we've, over the years, been able to provide loans to. These have included, uh, some, some names you'll recognize, most of them still in business here in Middleton. We've done a couple of loans to Electronic Theater Control, uh, Galop Biotech, uh, which became Catalent, uh, we did some financing for them. Soft Switching Technology, uh, Capital Brewery, uh, we did a couple of equipment loans for them. Death's Door Distillery, uh, we did some bridge financing there as well. Lucigen, some equipment. An area that we've become more involved with recently is through the Madison Development Corporation and their Venture Debt Fund. We've made, uh, we participated in loans to two Middleton-based businesses, Berditt and, uh, Traffic Cast. And then prior to that, you may recall, um, uh, let's see, it was Solo Gear, the flame disc product, um, we participated in that as well. Our most recent involvement has been, um, with the, uh, Uptown Middleton Project and our last loan was to Kiva to help them expand their outdoor facility. So, we have a very good representation of businesses here in Middleton that we've had the privilege of working with over the years. And, uh, when I look back over the last, uh, since two thousand and thirteen, MADC has made over three and a half million dollars worth of loans here in Middleton, all of which has been repaid successfully. So, we have a very good track record to that regard. Our current board and our professional team, uh, our professional team is comprised of Lee Boucher as our legal counsel and Charles Liberty as our CPA. Again, you know, because we're a separate entity, we have separate counsel. Charles and Lee have been with the organization a long time and their, um, advice and counsel has been, um, has served us well. Our current board is made up of two representatives here from the council, Mayor Barrar and Robert, who unfortunately isn't here tonight. And then I serve as president. John Geigle, who's been a board member for a long time, is our vice president. Andy Lewis, a former council member, is serves as our secretary. And Mike Pettah is our treasurer. I want to give a tip of the cap to Mike. Mike brought me on board with, uh, MADC. He really goes back to, uh, I think, two thousand and three, possibly. He's done a lot of good things for the city of Middleton. I can't say enough about, uh, what the work he's done, the mentorship he's provided. He has been a great, great resource, um, uh, for MADC and his banking background, I think, has served MADC well over the years. He's retired now, but, um, he's done a lot of good work for MADC. And then, just to kind of wrap up, um, what are we working on as we look to two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen? We're in the midst of, um, getting our website updated. I'm happy to report we're working with a Middleton-based, uh, business in doing that so the dollars that we're spending stay here. We also realize that, uh, our board, uh, we need to do some development and recruitment and, uh, we're starting the wheels turning on that as we look into the future. And I think that's going to provide some exciting opportunities. I mentioned that we renewed the airport lease, uh, for the terminal. And, uh, again, that spans five years, so, you know, it, uh, it's just some stability for us as we look into the future. We have, as a board, recognized that we want to get out and with John Geigle's help, uh, we're going to, uh, network more with the area banks to tell them about the capacity of MADC and see if we can generate some more opportunities to make loans. And I think, you know, at the end of the day, it gets down to the partnership that we're able to cultivate and work with, with the city. I see Van Nutt here with the Chamber of Commerce. I think you have three solid legs on the stool here and what we've done together, working together, uh, in the Middleton community to help drive economic development. So, with that, I think you've got a little flavor of our past and where we're going in the future and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any quick questions, Michael? Yes?
Quick question. You said you started with, uh, two million. What's your current asset size?
Four point two million.
And, uh, how much of that is loaned out?
Uh, currently, we have approximately half a million of that loaned out.
So you're looking for people to borrow money from?
You bet, yeah.
I've been doing that for a long time, so...
And we, you know, we approve loans, they don't always get funded either. So, um, it, you know, I hate to use the expression depends, but, um, it does depend. One of our other criterias in making loans is personal guarantees. Not everybody wants to get a personal guarantee, so that prevents us from making a loan too. So, we operate somewhat like a bank, that, you know, we're only going to be expecting guarantee and, uh, not everybody looks at part of the program.
Is there any part of that four-two that's real?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Real estate?
Um, actually, all. There is real estate, uh, securing one of the loans. The rest of the loans, uh, two of the loans are through, uh, MDC, the Venture Debt Fund, and the other loan is secured by equipment.
I'm talking about, have you foreclosed on?
No, we've, we've not foreclosed on any real estate, nor have we, um, not lost any money on any of the loans we've made. We've never had any write-offs.
Any other questions for Kevin? Yeah?
As chairman of the Airport Commission, we're always concerned about expenditures and I'm just wondering if you could forgive the note that we have with you guys? Oh, I don't, you don't need to give me an answer tonight.
Okay, all right, already over.
That's enough, huh?
Anyone else? Okay, yes, Mike?
Kevin, uh, very humbly mentioned everybody else, but I just wanted to say we really benefited from his leadership on MADC over the last six, seven years and, uh, thank him publicly for doing that. We, we have the advantage of having three people in banking on MADC that have been there for a long time. We are looking at, as you said, I think, refreshing?
No, recruitment.
Recruitment, recruitment. But, but, you know, to plan, succession planning for MADC, uh, and Abby is part of that in terms of replacing me as staffing for MADC. And, uh, I, I see that that's good thinking and, uh, looking pretty much, but thanks, Kevin, appreciate your, your work.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the approval of consent agenda. It has two items, the common council minutes and the audit of the bills.
The approval.
Second.
I call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion for the consent agenda has passed. So the next one, we start with the agreements. So the first one is the agreement for consulting services with Wisconsin Energy Conservation Corporation for Sustainable City Plan Update.
Approval recommended by finance. Second.
Any questions?
Just for the public, that includes the city attorney's final review and approval.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I call the question, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. So the next one is, uh, the request to extend construction completion date for Cardinal Law Apartments from Sept- Sep- September first, twenty seventeen to December thirty-first, twenty seventeen, finance committee.
Approval recommended by finance. Second.
Any questions, any comments? Okay, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion is passed. So the next item is the professional services agreement relating for sire maintenance finance committee.
There actually, like, two motions here, or two separate contracts that need to be approved again, so this, uh, did you say Matt had agreed? Matt? Never mind. So the first one is the, uh, just the sire maintenance contract, so approval is recommended by finance.
Okay, and a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? Any questions, any comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that first motion is passed.
Second motion is for the approval of the AP automation. You can go.
Okay, any questions, any comments, any discussion? Okay, if there's no more discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion for the, both motions for the event for sire maintenance is passed. So, the next one is a word of bid code professional services. And the first one is Milton Tourism Window Placement Back Home for seventeen thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Approval. Second.
Okay.
This is actually subject to the city attorney.
Okay, subject to city attorney approval. Any question, any discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes?
Is it, is it typical or how often do we put things like this? We don't put these up for bid?
It's based on the amount and when it's less than twenty-five thousand dollars, public bidding is not required.
Thank you.
But I think most of the time, they give more for bids, so this was...
More competitive quotes, if not, as bidding is...
Yeah.
Or, or the votes.
Yes. So this was a special situation as well. Well, uh, if there's no more questions or comments or concerns, although, then I call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, tourism will have new windows. Okay, so the next one is miscellaneous. So, the first one is withdrawing from federal transportation alternate program grant for northeast Milton connection path project.
Approval recommended by finance.
Well, then, finance, no, it's the part, that's the pet bike and transit. Mark, you want to say anything?
Only two questions, happy to answer.
Okay, so anybody want to make a motion for approval or not?
I just did.
Okay, any second? You seconded it? Okay, so, well, Mark is going to explain.
Holder Teal had a question, I think.
Okay, yes, Howard.
Could you take ten seconds and, uh, explain to us, uh, what transpired on this and why we're doing what we're doing?
We applied, I applied a road grant application and listed by Transit Committee and the council endorsed it last year. We obtained, we were successful in obtaining the grant, we're doing it, sixty-six thousand nine hundred and five dollars, uh, federal funding. We then, that was last August or so that we found that out. And then, as we, uh, sent out the RFPs, or requests for proposals for consultants for design engineering services, we started hearing from a couple of times that we noted late our Tiff consultant, engineering consultant. Started hearing some concerns about, uh, that the grant would, it would be in the city's best interest to proceed because of all the I's dotting and T across that we would need to do. Also, at the same time, Tom pointed out, I had any error in the calculations for segment life, which affected real estate and payment costs. And so, those two in combination, um, the grant just wasn't going as far as it could and it would be tied to all the requirements of the federal grant. I also talked with, uh, other consultants, you can see the email in your packet from Linda Pink, and, uh, talked with, uh, people at Dane County, said they don't even chase this money unless it's at least half a million and usually closer to a million dollars because it's just not worth it. So for those reasons, we started in the winter to get cold feet and I talked about it with my Transit Committee and then I updated you folks in, in April in the bust work. And this is just formality to, um, turn the back grant, to turn back the grant, maybe a, uh, letter from the city.
Yes.
Sorry about the mistake that I made.
Go ahead.
So if you're, I'm watching as you mentioned that, um, a number of people on Century Avenue are also concerned about their...
Oh, yeah, that's another, uh, part of the two. There are a few residents, uh, west of, or kind of across the street from the PDQ, um, so from the bridge at Brand Street east towards CVS, basically, that, six houses or so. Several of them have voiced concern about having sidewalk widened in front of their home. Feel that would be disruptive to their front lawn, even though we probably could work out and arrange it with them where by the city would take out the maintenance, but they, they, they have concerns about it, so they've been coming to have that Transit Committee loans. And, uh, one of the households that they said they would have to see the path in their backyard, which is a part of the conservancy. So, we'll see if that actually comes to fruition, but we want to look at design options through, um, capital borrow, as a, in fact, the planning commission recommended it as a capital budget, funded by Tiff five for next year for a design order. And also I should add, Councilor has prepared a, has updated the, uh, cost estimate to be seconded, close to a six hundred thousand dollar project.
So, Mark, at one time, you thought that you might be able to get more money from the federal government, you could apply for more grants, or no?
Well, I mean, that's another option. The problem is if we turn it back, that might, uh, sour them on ordering granters. The thing is, with this federal money for this specific grant, I think for, like, all federal grants, they just have very strict requirements that you follow. Labor laws, environmental, historical, archaeological studies, things like that. And I'm not saying that the city wouldn't do diligence in managing the project itself, that we wouldn't, you know, follow proper practices, but we wouldn't need to pay someone to the shot what it wants to shot. Like, here, he explained this really well the other day. Basically, part of the requirement is that we design the project and then we pay someone, another engineer comes to review the design. You know, that's just part of the rules that, that they granted us and, uh, we wouldn't need to do some of the steps. We have more flexibility.
Yes, Howard?
You're not giving up on this, Gloria?
On the project, no. No, there's strong, I think there's strong support circulating at the Council Committee. I think the Alder person for the areas, uh, well, and so I've spoken to Alder Sullivan, but I, I know that Alder, Ramsey's on board is supportive. I think Alder Westbury, very, very, um, I think you've been supportive as well in, in Alder and perhaps, we haven't talked about it for a while yet. I think there's still strong support, the planning commission recommended it for, uh, funding as a part of their capital budgets.
Yeah, it's a very important, longstanding project.
Right. If we're not going to put up, um, improved path in the conservancy that provides an all season connection to the northeast side of the city, then, then Century Avenue is the only connection that exists. And today, that connection is very narrow and to cross things over the bridges, the two crossings, the one west of Main Street and the one east of Allen, you know, get ginkful of ice and snow in the winter and they're very close to the road, obviously, all year long. So it's, it's just not a very safe port for the ice, I guess. It's not safe at all. I wouldn't put any measure of safety on it.
Okay, any other questions for Mark or any questions or comments?
County also has a long-term plan to, uh, extend the path along the north side of Lake Lawn Highway out east of Middleton, so this would connect with that ultimately.
If there are no more questions, I call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Focus, the motion passes. So the next one is, uh, potential submitter for Great Places in Wisconsin, Wisconsin Chapter of the Mapplaning Association of Planning Staff.
Move approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do you, does anybody want to say anything about it?
Just that we were approached by a member of, um, the Princess Ranch Conservancy about submitting the application on behalf of the city. Irene has offered to prepare the application through no costs associated with it, but, um, the award would be presented at the Wisconsin, um, Planning Association Conference in late October, should we receive, um, the recognition.
Any questions for Abby and Mark or anyone? So if there are no more questions, I call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes, all right. So the next one is requesting use of green space for August twenty-first, twenty seventeen for solo eclipse event. This is the library director.
Move approval, second.
Okay, any questions?
Good idea.
No.
Okay, it does sound like a good idea. Okay.
The place is small, party.
Call the question, please.
Okay, I call the question, all those, Jocelyn, you want to say anything or you're happy?
No, I'm, I'm very happy. Um, if there is, I am happy to answer any questions. Um, this is just a continued piece of the current phase, um, as similar to, thank you for, 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 for Larry.
Okay, okay, I call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, motion passes. The next one is establish polling, polling place location city block.
I move that we refer this to finance so that we can have more discussion, um, about the options.
Okay, need a second?
Also, it's getting committee to send it to. I'd like to, at some point, have an elections commission, um, but in lieu of that, I think we need some discussion by a committee and not just a state council.
Second.
Okay. Any questions on this one, sending it to Finance Committee?
My only question was in your notes.
Well, the question was in your notes, configuration of the districts. Is that just?
Just moving the polling.
It's not registered.
You can't register. Nice try.
One of the financial implications.
Pardon?
What are the financial implications?
Just the mailing of the postcards.
Which we would have to do no matter what.
Yeah, no matter what.
And is there a timeframe when this needs to be decided?
Um, I have thirty days before an election, so.
And our next election is February.
Possibly February. Yeah. We wanted to communicate well ahead of time and keep that push out so people aren't surprised.
So it can go to the finance committee for next meeting and then we could watch. Okay, any other comments, question or discussion? Okay, all those in favor, I call the question although in favor of sending it to finance committee say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion is passed. So the next one is application for Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation Community Development Investment Grant to support phase two of Milton Center.
Move approval by finance.
Second.
Any question, comments, discussion? Okay, I'm gonna call the question although in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? So the motion is passed. So the next one is direction concerning the downtown plaza project. Who wants to take it on?
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to negotiate purchase price for the subject properties.
Second.
Any questions or any discussion, any comments? Okay, I'm gonna call the question.
Well, I think we, I'd like to say that depending on the price, I don't know that my vote will, tonight I'm going to vote for it, but depending on the price, I might not vote for the final. So I think, I think come with our staff to give us a, a good package that we can all support. Or else I think the votes would not be here for anything that's outrageous.
Any other, Mike, you want to say something?
Yeah, just to clarify, of course, we discussed this in closed session prior to the open session. And my understanding is that the council favors the site, but contingent upon a price that, that they believe is reasonable. And they've asked us to negotiate based on their concerns over the overall value of the property as expressed. Is that a fair assessment?
Okay, any, any other comments or questions? Okay, if there are no more comments or questions, I'm gonna call the question although in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. The next one is Water Creek Stormwater Management Financing for Neighborhood Portion.
I'll move approval that beyond the previous agreement where water resources is fronting the entire amount and repaid through the five-year payment plan as previously agreed.
Second.
Okay. Any questions, any comments, any discussion? Okay, if there are no more questions, I call the question although in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? So this motion is passed. So the ordinances, an ordinance to authorize charge for checks returned for insufficient funds.
Well, I think you have missed the break.
Which one?
You missed out on all agenda.
Okay, all right. I didn't have this, the red marked copy of it. So stipulation for dismissal of litigation concerning assessment of property owned by Eric and Karen Falsworth.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions? Although in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. Now we are on to the ordinances, an ordinance to authorize charge for checks returned for insufficient funds.
Move approval, second.
Any questions or discussion, although I call the, yes.
Just wanted to ensure, this is the second reading, right?
This is the second reading.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the question, although in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? So this ordinance is passed now. Planning and zoning. Request for tax increment financing, district three increased assistance Milton Center to.
Move approval by finance.
Second.
Any questions or concerns and discussion? Do you want to, you have any? Okay, if there are no any questions or comments, I'm gonna call the.
It is a conceptual approval, right?
Yes.
For the record. Conceptual approval. And that will authorize staff to begin working on a TIF development agreement. But with the understanding that we have to button up on all of the other issues that we talked about.
Right, I think the settlement of finance is definitely, we would not consider the final until we know that those things are all wrapped up.
Although thirty-six points.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine steps.
We remember. Okay, any other comments or questions or discussion? Okay, I'm gonna call the question although in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? So the motion is passed. So the next one is specific implementation plan and preliminary flat the community of Bishop Bay, the Prairie and the Forum, phase five.
Move approval by the line commission.
Okay, need a, okay.
I would like to clarify, if I could, what that line commission motion was. And Eileen Kev Kelly's memo where it says number forty-one. It summarizes all of the math there. That is meant to supplant, to replace number forty-one in those list of conditions that you saw from Tom Wilson in the town of Westport. And John Sowsky, that was his one comment that he had for the meeting. Entire agenda told me he could have the night off if he just told me what he wanted. That, that's what he and Eileen and Tom Wilson agree on, is that that language in her memo supplants what we have in number forty-one of Tom Wilson's memo.
So the motion is to include that language, right, Mark?
And Mike, I just, just, I just wanted to comment that Eileen's memo was July twenty-sixth, Sean's memo yesterday. So I don't know that, and you, you, you can tell me, but it, it seemed to me.
I took the time to decipher what Sean was saying, and that's what he was saying.
Okay.
It took me a while to figure it out, but I figured it out. And it is that we remove the other language, replace it with this language. And.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one more thing. And I always thought that the payments that were being made that would ultimately be connecting to the water loop would be payments in escrow rather than deposit. This, this, as it's written, would require deposit. And it's all right with me, it's a better deal for the city. But we, I've been at meetings where that has been discussed before. We don't actually have a development agreement because this is in the town. But that, that was a concept we always understood, which means, in essence, that if we didn't build the water loop in 2019, we'd give the money back. Otherwise, the money would be applied toward the water.
I guess you're looking for me too. It sounds right, I'm not sure.
Yes, everyone.
So just to note, the stat comments on this one, I think you're asking for council feedback? Or are you actually asking for approval of the implementation? Or am I reading wrong?
Implementation of the, I think it's fifty-three points in the memo from Tom Wilson with number forty-one supplanted by the language in Eileen Kelly's memo. And that calls to Larry's point, receiving payment in the amount of $485,549.31 to utility district number one for the proposed fifty-three point one four nine acre development so that plat five, phase five platted lands can be removed from the utility district. And the payment due for phase five plat is approximately $388,000. And reserve account payment for the utility district is $97,108. The total adds up to $485,541.31.
No, my question to Eileen was, did I say if the cost is much higher than what we have predicted now? So what happens? Do they have to pay?
No, this is, we are trading off getting the actual amount based on actual costs in exchange for getting the money now. And it might be higher, it might be lower, but on that issue, this is a full and final payment for this phase. And if we can build it for half the cost, fantastic. If it costs us twice as much, that's our problem. It's a fixed payment for as yet unknown cost. But bear in mind, we, of course, bid this, we designed it. This is all been done before, and I'm assuming the engineering staff is comfortable that these numbers are realistic.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, then I'm gonna call the question although in favor of this say aye. Anyone opposed? So the motion passes. So the next one is the concept review of first mixed-use document including Milton markers seven six two to Lee Southern.
Move to referral for three and four.
Yes, let's just do it together.
Any questions?
Just as developers here, so if you want to convey your concerns or thoughts on that to her, it might be helpful.
Okay, go ahead.
One major concern is that the road should be public and built to city standards.
Okay. Any other? Yes, Kathy.
Also, where you know that you'd rather have walkways instead of between buildings versus going to the parking lots. And I still support moving the lower tan building over to the walkway or to the drive-in road.
And I'd like to see the largest guy on the workforce housing.
Yes, Howard.
Oh, okay.
I did my.
For seven hundred grand that we're starting to sink into solar, I would like to see more information as to what you're involved with that, what you're going to do with it.
Absolutely.
Where it's going to go.
I'm concerned about the number of units coming on at the same time.
They'll actually come on in two phases over a four-month period, more than likely. Just because of the phasing of construction, not because it's a phased project.
Okay, any other comments?
I agree.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you were looking at doing a green roof, you had the normal cost at forty thousand. And now with the solar, you're looking at three hundred thousand.
That's just because of the, oh.
I can speak to that. So there is a thirty percent federal tax credit for solar. And what we have incentivized on other TIF agreements for solar, we did on Market West, Laser Express, and Parometer Circle, phase two, is seventy percent of the cost of the installation. Thirty percent being cut.
I have a question for Abby.
Yes, go ahead.
I know at the TIF meeting, we discussed seeing and approving the materials that would be used.
Yes, yeah.
And I think that's an important thing that needs to be provided to us if we want to see high-quality materials so the buildings last a long time.
Yes. And we typically don't get materials and mills until we're in the resuming phase of the application. But I'm glad that you brought up the point because one of the things that we have been doing through the TIF PMT meetings is to have a little bit of a heightened design review process for some of these larger projects, especially that involve TIF. And we did it on phase one of Milton Center. I think it really has paid off in the quality of instruction of that building and the quality of materials that are being used. And it's something that our staff will be recommending as the rezoning department for the Tracehead Development as well.
Okay, any more input for?
Can I just comment to that as well, Ms. West? Is, we, we are a free builder by trade, so we fit very high-quality lot and lasting. You won't see vinyl siding on our buildings, you'll see stone, thirty-year sightings, forty-year sightings and things of that nature, so.
Any more input? Okay, then I will call the question although in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? So the motion passes, need a motion to, Mike, you have something to say?
Before you adjourn, just real quickly, I sent an email message to the council earlier today to see if we could have a short council meeting prior to the Capitol Projects Presentation on August twenty-ninth. I've heard back positively from the mayor and five of you. I hadn't heard back yet from Howard and Robert, he's on vacation. So Howard, can you attend on August twenty-ninth? And Joanna said she could not be here, that, and I just need to know that we can have six before we can say the meeting.
It's also the night of the finance meeting.
That's right, it's, the finance meeting is at six o'clock. If you hear the Capitol Budget request, normally you would be here if that. You're not driving a bus or something.
Not at that time.
So for the public, we will have a brief council meeting at six o'clock on Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, to conduct that business. And that is to approve finally, we hope, the Market West parking lot agreement and the Pleasant View Road left-hand turn that helps to accommodate the ETC development. Both of those things will be going to Public Works Committee on August fourteenth and August twenty-eighth for several approvals of design and then the final bid. And then come back to the council on the twenty-ninth. And that will help us, we hope, to get the construction of those done yet this fall. We can get a six-week period moving forward.
Okay, need a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Okay, thank you, guys, great job, everyone.